Hello all, it's Monday evening, September 24th, 2018. This meeting may be recorded live. It is held in the Neil Shapiro Auditorium at Winthrop High School. Ms. Haynes, you please call the roll.
Mr. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Matucci.
Yep.
Ms. Powell. Present. Ms. Swope.
Mr. Vecchia.
Present.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Mr. Perrin, will you please lead us on our pleasurable allegiance?
I'd be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment this evening? Hearing none. Any delegates and visitors? None? Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2018 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by President Vecchia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Alright, we do have a couple warrants, payroll warrants, and budget transfers. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrants SVW 19-5, the amount of $162,932.61, and SVW 19-5A, the amount of $54,816.70.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Swope. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Payroll warrant SPW 18-29, the amount of $165,597.16. I'd like to make a motion to approve that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fabiano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
One abstention, and the ayes have it. And we do have a budget transfer in the amount of $29,136.32. Any discussion? Actually, I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Swope. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We do have a few buildings and grounds requests, some by Winarch, the Special Olympics, and the Winthrop Charing Practice.
Motion, take them both together?
Motion by Mr. Perrin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by President Vecchia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
One abstention by Mr. Fabiano, and the ayes have it. Moving on to Subcommittee reports. Mrs. Swope, we had a curriculum meeting before today.
Yes, we did. And we talked a little bit about the software opportunities that we have currently in place and what we are doing with them and how they're working. We talked a little bit about how curriculum is going to be built under Lori, as well as the teachers and the principals collaborating together, and how we can work with our affiliates, essentially, which are included, which include Revere, Chelsea, Malden, Everett, and Winthrop. We think that in this collaborative, we have opportunities to learn from one another in a very significant way. This is not a collaborative that's new, but we plan to bring it back in fuller force so that we can build the curriculum off the expertise of not only those that are in Winthrop, but also those that are serving other communities. We also talked about the fact that, of course, what is taught is based upon the standards, and instruction is, of course, extremely important in that regard. So, the materials that we buy for curriculum are just part of the equation that makes us successful and makes our students successful. So, we hope to see changes, but also continue to proceed with the work that is being done well in the coming year. And I thought it was a very productive conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, do you have any questions? Alright, if we could just go back to buildings and grounds. Winarch actually made a request to waive the rental fee, and I'd like to make a motion to accept that.
Accept.
Seconded by President Vecchia. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And one abstention. Mrs. Howard, Superintendent report.
Very much. My superintendent report this week will be brief. Last super, last committee meeting, it was quite lengthy and gave you an update on the opening of school. I wanted to remind people for this week, we have the Alice training for our parents on the 26th. It will be here. We have offered this, it's not a training, it's a presentation. We've offered the presentation for the parents so that they can have an understanding, a better understanding of what the Alice training that our teachers have undergone is, and I'm happy to report that we are at 92% of our entire school staffing, which includes cafeteria staff, custodial staff, teachers, ESPs, substitutes, secretaries. 92% of the staff has completed their Alice online training. What Alice is, is a second layer. We have not gotten rid of hold-in-place or lockdown at any level. This is just an additional piece of training that gives staff members some more options on top of the standard hold-in-place and lockdown. So, we decided to get the staff trained first and then to meet with our parents, all of those who are interested, so that they can understand through Chief De La Hanty and myself why we're adding one more layer, and what this does for just the overall understanding of what one would do if there was an intruder in the building. Things that we don't like to think about, the training itself is a little unnerving when you go through the process of the PowerPoint presentation with a test at the end, but it's the reality of the world that we live in. And our goal is to make sure that anyone who works within the Winthrop Public Schools understands what our lockdown procedures are, what our hold-in-place procedures are. It's one of the larger goals that we have for the district, is to continue to improve every chance we can get on making sure our staff are well-prepared. Letting our parents know what we're doing, I think, is very important, so if there's conversation at home by any of our students in the upcoming months, by no means is Alice training a training for children or staff to fight back against an intruder. It just gives them additional options. And I think before the students are made aware of what the teachers have been trained in, we need to alert our parents. So, again, if there's conversation coming home. At the elementary level, an understanding of Alice training to our younger students will be much different than what we're able to report to our older students. It comes with a curriculum that definitely speaks to the age level of the students, also with recommendations about what to share with parents. And I've been in close contact with the folks from Alice Training, and Chief De La Hanty, through his safety grant, has funded this collaboration of effort. We have many police officers, our athletic director, several school administrators that are also fully Alice-trained, so a train-the-trainer model. So, as we have new staff come in, certainly, we can put them through the Alice online training, which has a neat component to it, because at any given moment, I can go online with all of the staff members. We uploaded their email addresses and their email address, as well as their names. So, at any given moment, I can go on and see who is trained. And as part of our HR process now, if you come to the school and you fill out all your correct paperwork, and you want a substitute here, or, we haven't hit the volunteer circuit yet, but for all our substitutes that will be here for any length of the day, they also will be trained. So, we can keep an accurate sort of list of people who are trained and who require that training. So, we're hoping to keep that at 100%. So, that will be on the 26th. It starts at 6:00 for the elementary, parents and guardians of elementary school students. We think it probably lasts for about 30 minutes, and we'll have a question-and-answer period. And then at 6:45, our middle and high school parents will be invited to come in. They've been, sent home a flyer with each student, and each school has sent out a ConnectEd to let the parents know. There'll be a reminder coming up this week as well. One of the other things I wanted to highlight was Sunday, I had the opportunity to drive around town and see our students cleaning the community, and it was interesting to see, they were all moving and grooving and actually cleaning, which is something that when I ask my kids to pick things up, it doesn't usually look like that. They had plastic bags, plastic gloves, and they were actually doing the work. The materials for the pickup and the cleanup were sponsored by the Eleven Foundation, and so, you know, we thank them very much for sponsoring it. Our students certainly showed a level of pride in their community. I think that it's becoming catchy to give back. I think our students appreciate at a very high level the school buildings that they are being educated in, as well as the beautiful athletic facilities that they have access to. And one of the comments that I received by email from a community member who was participating in the cleanup was that of all the areas that they cleaned, they were blown away by the cleanliness around the school buildings, and how there was minimal work that needed to be done on the perimeter of the schools, and that I believe that speaks directly to our custodial staff and also our students paying attention to using the barrels and wanting to keep the area that they are educated in every day clean. So, thank you to our custodial staff and principals for pushing the respect issue of your own school buildings and the facilities, and it was great to see the students. And again, thank you to the Eleven Foundation. And the only other item I have on my report tonight is, at the end of the week, we anticipate the release of the new accountability ratings with MCAS. We are working together as a leadership team, we had a meeting right before this meeting tonight, to talk about the rollout of the information regarding the accountability ratings. It's a very confusing process for all superintendents and school committees in the Commonwealth, because it is so different, and it is quite cumbersome. It's hard to compare yourselves to anything else, so it's making educators a little bit rattled about how you're going to roll that information out. So, we want to make sure that we take the process of informing not just the school committee, but also reaching out a little bit wider than we have in the past, and working with our parents to understand, not just sending a letter to say, "This is how you read the test scores," but what does this new accountability system mean? And how is it made? What do these ratings mean? What are they going to be used for? And then, more importantly, and where did my child fit? And what is the school district going to be looking at in terms of those individual scores and school-based scores? So, we're working on how we're going to provide that presentation. I'm a firm believer in a three-hour presentation on one school building about the students' ratings. It's not overly helpful in terms of the school committee, but it may be very helpful to a parent. So, we're going to get together as a group. We've decided today that we're going to be working out what we think is going to be the best delivery of that information. So, more to come on that once the leadership team has come up with a plan. We have a rough plan, but we want to make sure that everybody is going to benefit from any type of presentation that we give, and that the presentation tells a story of how to interpret these results and why everything changed. And what does that mean for Winthrop? What does that mean for the coming school? How does that look at the high school? So, those were things that were important to the team. So, hopefully by next meeting, I'll be able to give you a calendar of how we will be presenting and the format in which we'll do that. And I believe that was it for me. Onto the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Howard. Moving on to personnel, we do not have any new appointments. We do have one resignation. Mr. Christopher Lawrence, a chemistry teacher, has resigned. We do not have any retirements. We are posting a chemistry teacher for WHS, an English teacher, long-term sub at WHS, and various stipend positions. And we do have one leave of absence, Ms. Laura Moran is going on maternity leave. On the new business, our collective bargaining unions have reached agreements with the Winthrop Teach Association bargaining unit and the Clerks and Secretaries unit. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the teachers, the one-year teachers' contract. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Swope. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Ms. Haynes, you please call the roll.
Mr. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Stand.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Swope.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes. That's six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one abstention, the ayes have it. I would also like to make a motion to approve the contract with the Clerks and Secretaries bargaining unit.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Ms. Haynes, you please call the motion. The roll.
Mr. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Swope.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Stand.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes. That's six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention. Moving on, kindergarten class size has been something that we have discussed in the community. We've had various conversations with councilors, President Vecchia, and the town manager. And Ms. Howard, I know you had an update on the status of that conversation.
Thank you very much. At the last school committee meeting, we had some excellent parent input. We had parents who came for public comment, and it was not on the agenda for an item of discussion, so we did not have school committee discussion on kindergarten class size, but I did give an overview and a presentation, and certainly had taken the input from the parents, from public comment, back to Ms. Pearson and the kindergarten teachers. It just so happens on that day, last, two weeks ago Monday, I had also had a very lengthy discussion with the six kindergarten teachers that we have in place, and had a conversation about a number of things related to kindergarten, and we did a quasi-version of a SWOT analysis, which is that quirky thing that I've been talking about that helps us with a problem that we want to come up with some solutions for, and you look at the strengths, you look at the weaknesses of a program, or a class size, or an item that you have concern with. You look at the opportunities that may exist, and then you look at the sort of the threats around the topic that you're discussing. Ms. Pearson and I had had several meetings from May of last year until that meeting of two weeks ago with the kindergarten teachers, and the administration was involved as well. So, on that Monday, we met, I met with Ms. Pearson and the kindergarten teachers to review the state of the kindergarten and to identify how a class size of 26 was impacting the teaching and learning and the safety of the environment that they were in. The feedback was excellent. Teachers were allowed to share with me true concerns that they had about the class size. Originally, in May, I think I explained a couple of weeks ago that we had done some proactive projecting of numbers for the kindergarten, and Ms. Pearson felt strongly that we needed to reach out earlier to figure out what our numbers were going to be. We ended up, I believe, and Ms. Pearson will correct me if I'm wrong, with 24 in a class at the end of last school year. 24 is not an ideal number in kindergarten. It's not the highest number we've seen, but it's not ideal. We like the average to be 23 or lower would be great, but with, we had six teachers, and in June, we anticipated based on early registration and projections that we should end up right about the same spot, around 24. We watched those numbers very closely throughout the summer, and along with Judy Bono, who's our information, parent information specialist, and kept track of the numbers. And in June, we were right about where we thought we should be with the projection, and in July, we were hovering around 23, 24. And in August, we had, towards the end of August, I believe, 25 students in three classes and 24 in the other three, and we felt like we were stable and we weren't going to move any further. Each classroom has one full-time teacher and one full-time kindergarten ESP assigned only to that classroom. Between the end of August and September 10th, we enrolled nine kindergarten students that were completely unexpected to come into the district. It's not unusual to have people come in after the first of the year, but you usually stabilize right before Labor Day weekend or at the end of August and don't have such a large jump. We had a large jump district-wide, so I believe we had 25 additional students new to the community enroll at the high school level, and I believe 24 overall, I think, at the Gorman Fort Banks, new growth in terms of additional students. So, I believe 25 at the high school. We took on an additional 25 new-to-the-community students, and I believe it was 24 at the elementary school. When I say 24, it's 24 in total, and of those 24, approximately nine were kindergarten students. As you know, residency is one of the technical issues that we have identified through a year-long look at the school district that needed to be tightened up. We've done a lot of work around residency, consistency of practice with our students in terms of where they live and checking their residence, and if they don't live here, how those conversations roll out, and the understanding that you need to have a true definition of residency to go to school here in Winthrop. We are up to 13 changes in residency where students who we had to check into don't live here. We've had that conversation with those parents, and those families have moved on to register their students in the community with which they reside. And we will continue that practice throughout the entire school year, and we're also working on some contact, mid-year contact with parents through mailing system to determine whether or not their residency still exists. We're trying to keep up with our IPASS system to keep it accurate, so sometimes when families move during the school year, they don't necessarily tell you that they've moved. We don't necessarily ask, and students don't necessarily say they've moved either. They may move from Court Road to Loring Road, but we still need, for safety purposes, accurate addresses for our system of notifying parents in case of an emergency, which is the number-one priority, but also when we send mailings out for important school-related activities, and we want to make sure that our students are getting that information. So, back to kindergarten, some of the things that both parents and teachers articulated as concerns with a class size of 26, 26 students in a class is a lot based on the square footage of the classroom. I happen to have been in the classrooms. I can verify that 26 five-year-olds who are not exactly aware of what their body looks like in space, so you figure if you're sitting at a table like this and there's four, five-year-olds, we're not always sitting in a chair like this. Sometimes we're laying across the table, sometimes we're on the floor, not totally able to stay in the chair without some redirection. So, it is a classroom with 26 students and two adults right now that is what I would say stuffy in terms of the amount of people in the room and the activity that's taking place. The classroom, not all classrooms have bathrooms in it. This may not be a priority to a lot of people, but when you're five, the distance between when you've decided you need to use the bathroom and the time you get there is critical, and it's critical if you have to leave the room, because then if one person, one adult, needs to escort a child to a bathroom down the hallway, we now have 25 in a classroom with one individual, one adult. From a safety perspective, they're in an enclosed environment, but there's lots of other things that go on, aside from kids just trying to get out of a door. Students who need that one-to-one help, hand-over-hand help, assistance with getting up off the floor onto a chair, holding a pencil correctly, so that class size, there's an impact there. 60 of our kindergarten students, we have 158 kindergarten students, 60 of them have been identified as students coming from homes in which where English is not their first language. And when you enroll in school, parents have to fill out a home language survey, and if, in fact, the parents or the caretakers in the home, if their first language is not English, we are obligated by law to evaluate them to see whether or not the students require services under ELL, English Language Learners. That requires testing. And if you look at six classrooms, 60 kids on average, there's 10 students who come from homes where family doesn't necessarily speak English as the first language. That doesn't mean the child doesn't speak English or understand English, but it does mean that we have to make sure that we know that and that we adjust our instructional practice if, in fact, that is the case where they struggle with English as a language. Special education percent in kindergarten is 17.2%, which is higher than the average and higher than the state average, and also higher than the school district average. That is not unusual in kindergarten. We have kids that are coming out of EI, early intervention, who come to us with the need for a plan, and those of us in education realize early intervention and interventions at a younger age, the production is better. So, if you put the time and effort in at that age level, most likely those students will not require that service for a long period of time. Other things that came about in terms of the difficulty, properly supervising kids at recess and lunch, when you think about 26 kids going into a lunchroom with one teacher and one aide taking them down, and we need to get kids at peanut-free tables, we need to have kids with allergies sitting at certain tables, lunchboxes need to be opened, and things of the like. We have lunch monitors in the room, the teachers and the aides typically drop the students to the cafeteria, and then that's their time to have their lunch at the same time, so they don't stay in that room, but they do have to get the kids settled. Wide variety of pre-readyness skills requiring individual supervision and support, a wide array, meaning kindergarten kids don't all come to us ready to read and ready to get down to business. We have students that some have never held a pencil and don't know a letter to students who are already reading. So, breaking those students up into groups and the instruction, if you can think about the differentiation of instruction that happens, just developmentally, we're not all five-year-olds are on the same page. They talked about a great deal of time being allocated for safety, transitioning kids. It takes a long time to transition 26 kids from one end of the building to the next without having students stray off. When you're five, you're not necessarily following the rules, and, you know, the safety around making sure everybody is transitioning safely is important. Social relationships, they feel, is there's an impact there, because with 26 kids in a class, you're not able to go around to each one of the groups of students, and so if there's any conflict going on, you're sort of bouncing around to the conflict and hoping you're catching it, but it is a large amount of kids to have to take care of that. So, at the end of this discussion, where teachers were able to articulate, you know, what they felt were concerns, some of the great things, we have great kids, you know, we have parent involvement, we have students that want to learn and want to be in school and show up. Those are very positive things that the teachers are seeing. Teachers love their profession and they love their job as being a kindergarten teacher, all positive. So, then we talked about recommendations. What do we do as a district who has, and this is more for the public than it is for the school committee, but for a district that started out with a needs budget request, just a straight-up needs budget for this school year, 18, 19, of over $2 million, which was a very realistic, no wish lists, no what-ifs, no, you know, if we had this, but this is what we need. We ended up having a sort of reality check when we knew what the town was having for income into the town and what type of a budget we may get. So, we took that total needs budget and we broke it down into a budget that said, okay, these are now, if we're not going to be able to get $2 million realistically, what are our critical needs? And then what are the mandated needs? What's the state telling us we have to put in place? When we knew that the critical needs were critical, but we still weren't going to have enough income and money to support those, and we were only going to be able to get our mandated needs put into the budget. When the final day came, we received $800,000, a little more, which I was extremely grateful for. However, it wasn't enough to do everything we said we wanted to do. So, we had to cut $425,000 from what would have been a level service budget. So, if we had a level service budget for this school year, everything we did last year would have been the same this year, technically, the same amount, step-in-lane increases, and materials and supplies minimal increase. We fell a little bit short of that when we were given our budget, so we needed to reduce that number of a budget down to, by $425,000. At that point in time, kindergarten, an addition of a kindergarten teacher was a critical need, so it never made the list of mandated needs. So, we never put a seventh-grade kindergarten teacher in, because at the time, the numbers were still at 24. What happens in school districts is sometimes things become an issue that you weren't anticipating. Special education is a prime example. Kids move in from a collaborative, you didn't know they were coming. State law says you have to pay for them irregardless if they're in a collaborative immediately. You can't just say, "Oh, I don't have the money." You still have to do it. Things happen during the school year, boilers break. Kindergarten class size grows without us knowing, without us anticipating, even with the pre-work that we did. So, that's the position we're in. I did then, after we talked about all the good things, we talked about all the things that were troubling, safety concerns, I said, "Okay, now we have to figure out what we're going to do." So, as a group, we sat around and talked about different recommendations of how to solve the class size issue. Easy solve was to add a teacher and a paraprofessional or an aide and open up another classroom. That was the immediate resolution, because what that would mean is you would break 156, 158? Ms. Pierce, 158 or 156? 156? You would break 156 kids out into seven classrooms versus six. There's an impact involved in that. There's an impact involved in that, we talked about that, it's disruptive. Um, how do you do it? Do you ask for volunteers? Do you do a lottery? Do we have enough furniture? Do we have a classroom? So we talked a lot about that. We said, okay, if we can't, if that's not gonna happen, we still need to be able to educate our students. Can we come up with another uh thought? So this, another thought we came up with was to have um some retired teachers come back. Um, I'll give you an example, Ms. Lorraine Polo, who was a teacher who um was here two years ago, but as part of one of our reductions, we weren't able to bring her back this year. And she would come in and, and provide intervention services for some of our students in math and ELA. And she um for uh minimal money, because she's retired, so you can only pay her so much, she would come in and provide those services. Um, doing that across six teachers, if we brought six retired teachers back at probably ten, around ten thousand dollars apiece, if you think about the whole school year, three hours a day. Um, perhaps they could remove students from the classroom during the school day because they're certified, not necessarily their content area. They may have been a second-grade teacher or a third-grade teacher, ideally you'd like kindergarten teachers. Um, however, some, although that sounds like a good idea, some of the questions that come about, where would they service the kids? Would they take them out of the classroom? What's it like? Where they gonna, they gonna walk them down the hall or up the stairs? Are we gonna find six retired teachers in Winthrop that are willing to come five days a week? And that the impact is to reduce the class size, that's the goal. Um, but we did talk about that as an option. And then the third option we talked about was, um, does it make sense to add an additional ESP to each classroom? And ESPs are a bang for their buck and, and I will fully admit that. I've worked with ESPs for twenty-five years, um, and they, they do great work. Uh, they teach and they, they enforce instructional practice, they supervise, they keep kids safe. Um, if you were to bring on six additional ESPs, if you think about the classroom that I already talked about being overcrowded, having too many bodies in it, um, you're still in that same room and now you're adding another body, another, another adult. It's great for safety, the cost associated with that, an average ESP salary, twenty-five thousand, plus fringe, times six, um, was a large number. So at the end of the day, the way I left it with uh the kindergarten teachers was we were gonna continue uh to, to work on this, that I would be speaking with the school committee, which I'm doing now, that I would um also speak with pe, folks at the town level. The town manager is new. Um, I've had the opportunity to meet with him just to discuss philosophy and have him sort of understand who I am and what Winthrop Public Schools is all about. Um, I had him captive the other day for a discussion, uh pre-meeting, and I brought kindergarten up and brought him up to speed on where we were at with kindergarten, um, what my, what the teachers of the Winthrop Public Schools were expressing, what the parents were expressing, um, and what my thoughts were uh based on the work that I did with the principals and, the principal and uh the parents and the uh classroom teachers. So I uh informed him that my recommendation would be that we hire a teacher and an ESP uh and that we create an environment of teaching and learning that supports uh my early childhood philosophy, which is um the earlier the better, class size being smaller and, and having students at an opportunity, first introduction to public school um and making that a positive experience to teach them the love of learning uh and to keep them safe. At this young age and at such varying levels of development, I want to be able to maintain a, a focus on smaller class size and reasonable instructional groupings and of course, the safety of our youngest um students. So I let him know about my firm belief in uh providing safe and, and structured educational experiences as we set this foundation for the next twelve years for, for our youngest students. So my recommendation to him was that we, we add another teacher. I've looked through the public, our, our current budget, which is tighter than it's ever been. Um, as, as you recall, cutting, having to cut the additional money, we have left almost no wiggle room in the budget for special education. And when I say wiggle room, I mean a move-in. Um, so I have concerns uh, you know, around moving forward. Um, however, he, he listened with uh open ears. He had some really good questions uh and feedback to me. Uh, asked me a few questions about what the history's been like. I provided him with seven years of a history of class size of our students with or without ESPs. Um, so I am confident and feel confident that um if I can continue the discussion with the town manager, um, who will in turn continue discussion with the town council, um, that, that we will um, we'll be able to come to a resolution. That's my thought. I'm feeling confident about that because of the feedback I've received. So uh I wanted to update you on that and certainly am open for questions uh or recommendations about how to proceed. Um, but again, I'm, I'm feeling confident that my discussions with the town manager um will lead to a, a collaborative effort to make sure that our kindergarten students do not sit in a class of twenty-six students for the remainder of the year.
Lisa, you mentioned that we have a move-in, can you explain what that is?
So um if a student were to move from another community, in, in the world of special education, there's placement. So um if you live in a community, you are responsible for that child's placement, whether it's the public school, whether it's a collaborative, a special ed day school. Um, if a student lives from Winthrop and moves to uh Revere and they're attending a collaborative school, that's their special education placement. A collaborative school tuition follows a child on the day of a move. So if they move on Tuesday and they start school in the other community on Wednesday, Revere Public Schools would pick up the cost of that tuition on Wednesday. If the child's attending the public school, you could just reintegrate into that public school on, on the next day and that public school, the public school owns the education. If you're in a private special ed day school or a residential school, which are typically much higher in cost, there's a move-in law that says if you move, uh, if you move after April first of that school year, the school that you are moving from owns that tuition for the whole following school year. And the reason behind that is um budgetary. So you, you need to let it, an accepting dis, you know, an accepting district where you're moving to has to have time to plan for your tuition. Um, I, I believe the state failed to understand that collaborative tuitions have risen up to fifty-seven thousand on average. Um, so they need, my opinion is they need to move that collaborative piece into the move-in law. They have yet to do that, but um that is on the, that is a discussion point at the state level. Uh, so we have had, um, in the last two weeks, we've had two students move in from other communities. And when I, I spoke last year about building the social-emotional classroom at the middle school because we knew that that is the largest and most, then the, the fastest-growing population of students who are requiring a, a different level of education. Um, two of the students that moved to us are both uh middle school students. Um, and we were able to have a program for one middle school student who's currently at a collaborative. So that particular student is gonna come into our middle school in-district program, um, which is a, a ginormous savings. And that's the beauty of having quality programming and planning. Um, the other student is at a level where this, he or she is not yet ready to come back to the public school. So that is a tuition that we will uh have to pay. And y, circuit breaker uh is available for that. We've increased our circuit breaker reimbursement for this school year and a whole, for a whole host of reasons. Um, and so what was a sort of a win is now a wash, um, but that's the world of special education and, and that I'm fine with. Um, the difficulty comes when you're as tight as we are, uh, because of, you know, our, our funding, the, the general education sort of unanticipated costs are difficult to, to deal with. Um, special education comes with mandates and laws that make you do certain things. And in this case, you know, no one's gonna make us change the class size of twenty-six, but as a superintendent of schools in collaboration with the principal of the building and the, obviously the curriculum director and others, it, from an ethical standpoint and an educational standpoint, I would not recommend we continue with a class of twenty-six. And that's why I'm suggesting that uh we add another teacher and that, and, and aide. And that I work with the town manager to see if we can collaborate on identifying a funding source for that.
Further questions? President Beck, yeah?
Just a, a comment, Mr. Chairman, as a follow-up to the superintendent's report. Um, the town manager is quite concerned about the overcrowding of the kindergarten. Uh, we've had a couple of discussions about it. I know I have personally had discussions with some members of the, of the school committee and the town council. Um, he is working on a plan and hopefully uh by the next council meeting, which is next Tuesday, we'll have some type of solution, uh along with the discussion with the superintendent to make sure that, you know, it's what we need.
Excellent.
And I'm pleased with the fact that we, I'm able to have that discussion with the town manager. That's sort of my leadership style is to talk about it and let's see if we can have a solution and not to have to sort of tell each other what to do or, or uh put each other, pit one department against another, um, laying out absolutely everything we've done in terms of looking at the situation, looking at our budget, talking to the staff, understanding educationally what it means to be in kindergarten. Um, it, it's nice to have somebody that, that will at least take the time to listen. Um, so I, I'm pleasantly surprised, uh, but, but happy that he's willing to have that. We'll see what happens in a few weeks, but.
And Lisa, just be, just for a point of clarification, when you say a solution, you mean another kindergarten class with a teacher and ESP?
So my recommendation to, to, um, yes, based on the class size and, and my recommendation is that that would be the way to go. There are impacts in any change that we're going to make. And, and we want to have the least impact on the youngest people that we have in the public school. Uh, and so if in fact we are able to do that, the principal and myself will work out a plan uh that is strategic in, in making sure that the impact on the students will be the least impact.
This additional, uh, all these additional students, we're hoping that the tax base increases so that next year, as that, as that class moves through the system into first grade, which I doubt if it will go down, um, that we also have the kind of funding we need to, to continue.
I agree, we'll watch those numbers closely. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. I just want to thank you for your leadership on this issue and President Beck here as well and especially Mr. Faison. He definitely, uh, in his first few weeks here, he definitely hit the ground running. And my conversation with him, I made it clear this is a priority for us and I feel confident that we're gonna have a solution.
And, and just acknowledging to the, the principal of the building and the assistant principal and the teachers.
Oh, absolutely, goes without saying.
Because typically teachers will sort of just sit there and, and take it. Um, and in this particular case, the teachers felt very strongly that this is, and, and supported by their principal, that this is, this is an area that we're not comfortable really fooling around with. So I appreciate them, you know, coming to me and, and being honest.
And, and if I can, I think it's really positive that we have that many new students here in Winthrop. The last few years, we made a commitment to the town that, you know, we want new families moving here. We have a new school, we have a new field, we're, we're working on the center. And with all that, with advertising, with the real estate market increasing, we're getting new students and new families, so. And I'm glad that the town manager and the council will recognize that and will work it together on this. Any unfinished business?
Um, Chromebook policy is still, um, we're still working on that. Uh, we had, um, we'll probably bring it up at our next uh policy subcommittee meeting. The solar panels, I, I don't have an update on the solar panels from the town manager. I did uh ask for uh at the la, two meetings ago, you had asked that I get um the points from the town manager. I think there was a transition going on between um the last town manager and the current town manager. And so I do know that they exist because Larissa, um, who sort of runs the show up there, uh, told me that they did and that she was gonna research that and, and provide that to the town manager. Um, it's, I don't know where on his list of things to do that will fit. I'm sure he has a very lofty list, um, and, and so I will ask that, we bring that up again maybe at the next meeting.
I would require.
Okay.
I know, I know they were working on it, they, the Senate's illegal. Uh, he said it was, they were about ninety percent there. I thought we might have had something by tonight, but obviously we don't, but uh I'll follow up on it.
Moving on.
Just asking a question on that, is there a, a sense that that's something that we need to move on urgently? Or is there a sense that this is something that, a project that we wouldn't wanna start until after school, until next summer anyway?
I don't think it's that until after school, anyway. But that was, that was one of the questions.
Yeah, we prove it now.
There were just the discussions that we had.
They wanted this start sooner.
Yeah, but I don't know if you can start construction when students are in session.
We wanna prove everything now.
The plan was to school that out in the spring.
Well, after, in, by, by spring, you mean in the summer after the students are out of the building? Okay.
Moving on, any public comment this evening?
So I skipped one thing, so the strategic plan that I had, I had copied the strategic plan for you um and sent that to folks, probably, I think I sent it to the school committee only once. I sent it to the, my leadership team who developed the strategic plan along with myself, with a year and two months' worth of work. Um, I had sent that out to the committee with a cover letter. Um, and I, I sent it to the leadership team about eleven times. Um, so the leadership team um has finalized this product in terms of the plan uh with the mission, the vision, the objectives, the priorities and the core values. And just to uh reiterate, this strategic plan creates a vision for the future and identifies the goals and strategies necessary to move the district forward to meet the challenges of uh twenty-first century education. I'm presenting this to you so that you um can take a vote to allow us to move forward with our uh three objectives, which are, uh, have, have been developed after a years-long look at what works for Winthrop. Uh, this, our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities and our threats. And uh interviewing community members, parents, students, teachers, uh, Patsy from the meat market, Tom from the, from the credit union, um, and gathering all that feedback, crushing that data and coming up with three things, uh, three items or three areas that we wanna focus in on and then coming up with the priorities uh of each one of those areas. The piece that you do not see here is, will be the second um uh step in this process, which is individual building principals identifying action steps that are accountability sort of factors for this school committee to be able to focus on so that you can see based on the, our objective and the priorities that we have identified where we're at with each one of those. Um, in this whole process, we uh agreed as a leadership team that we needed a unified vision for the district of Winthrop and a unified mission and a unified core values. Um, once the school committee uh votes on this and accepts it, we will then take this on the road. And I say that kind of literally, where we will be working with our teachers, our parents, our school groups and continue to work with the school committee on getting this message out. And the message is that the um three objectives that we have are to provide a high-quality, high-quality rigorous instruction and curriculum alignment. That's the objective. It has priorities that go along with that, how we're gonna focus in on making sure we do that. Second objective is teaching all students in a sa, safe and welcoming environment. It's, these are broad on purpose. It allows us to focus in in an area like that on the social-emotional well-being of students as well as building security and, and a lot of other uh items that would be attached to that uh wide-ranging objective. And then the third objective, which is the professional culture and community engagement. Um, and again, the priorities begin to give you a, a look at how that would roll out and then the action steps will tell you over each year exactly what we're doing, not just as a district, but as, as individual schools. Each one of those priorities will turn into a link. So when it goes on the website, you'll be able to click one point one and it will take you from the priority, which it says expand and invest in programs and instructional practice that provide authentic student-centered learning. You'll be able to click on that, which will bring you to the action steps that will allow us to make sure that that priority is instituted across the entire district. But more importantly, how does that look at each school level? Um, the core values, we also did core values as a district, um, which can be, um, the, the district core values. Each individual school can continue with, say, at the fourth, their SMART plan as their core values. You, the two can't collide. So as a school district, we went with pride. Viking pride is something that people are ve, very familiar with. And this is the pride of Winthrop Public Schools, which P stands for personal success, R stands for respect, I for integrity, D for dedication and E for excellence. Just a, an understanding of um what I'm doing with any bit of this. As I'm in schools, I wanna see what excellence looks like at the high school. What is respect look like at the Gorman Fort Bank? So we will spend the year with the leadership team uh in each individual building, honing in on what does that look like in the building and how does that look as a district? Um, and how are we holding each other accountable for all of those things? Um, this is not something that's gonna sit on a desk. It will drive the um school improvement plans moving forward. It will drive my goals, which are almost completed for the school district. It will drive the goals of the principals that I will hold them accountable for. And the teachers in the building will build their school-related goals off of this strategic plan. Ideally, at the end of the day, uh, as we build the school's budget, which is part, it's one of the action steps within this, uh, as we build the school budget, it will be reflective of this document. And so what you see in the school budget should tie in to- And so what you see in the school budget should tie into high-quality rigorous instruction and curriculum alignment and it should tie into what that looks like at every building level. So I would, I presented this to you and asked, would ask you to vote whether or not to accept it and once it's accepted, I'll be able to move forward and roll it out.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the strategic plan.
I have a couple of questions, just before. I, I'm interested that there's no, on one point two, it's reading and writing, although our test scores would suggest that math and science were, are some, are critical.
So that's how, that's when you see the action steps? You will see direct correlation to math where it needs to be at each level. So it, and it may be at the elementary level and it may come under expanding and investing in programs and instructional practices that provide authentic student-centered learning. And one of the action steps may be related to growth in math at the second grade level. So it gets, it goes from wide, narrows it down a little bit more and then it will narrow it down a lot more.
But you did.
Can I get a motion on the table and then we can discuss?
Oh, sure, okay.
Ms. Powell has a motion to approve the strategic plan.
Has presented to us.
Seconded by Mr. Perrin and we have discussion, Ms. Swope.
Okay, sorry. It just, you, but you did single out reading and writing and didn't single out math and science, so it, there must, there's probably a reason.
There is and, and as we do the action steps, that will become more clear for each one.
And two more questions, an evaluation component, I take it will be part of the rest of the strategic plan for each one of these sections?
The evaluation component of the, of the teaching step or the evaluation component of the document itself?
The evaluation component of the action steps that you're planning.
So the action steps, that, that is what they, the end result of the action step is an evaluation of those. So you have to have the, who's accountable for driving that action step and when it's completed, correct? There's a timeframe for each one.
Okay, and then if the budget component, how is, how is this gonna, how is this gonna look? So the budget component, I know we have a budget, but will a budget component be attached to some of these steps?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yep, absolutely, when we build the budget, you will see the tie-in to, to the priorities and the objectives.
And the action steps.
Correct, and the action steps are evolving and the priorities are something year to year that can be tweaked. What typically doesn't change, it changes the objectives because they're so broad. But if a priority comes up, as it did tonight with kindergarten, if a priority pops up, that would be part of the strategic plan, it can be added to the strategic plan, it could be at an individual building level.
So what, how do, about the, how is the timeframe gonna work on how we'll see this roll out, do you think?
So the timeframe on this is, this is about thirteen months' worth of work that the, that the leadership team has vetted out over and over and over again. We've bonded throughout the process because there has to be levels of agreement with this. And then the action steps are a process that will now take place from now, probably this year's action steps, because some of them are already in place in a draft form, probably finalized, I would say, by November first. That will take us through June thirtieth. And then during that timeframe, we'll be developing them for the following school year.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
I just wanna, Superintendent Howard, thank you for the work that you put in this and I know that this is gonna be a successful strategic plan and I think it might as well refer as an action plan.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's interesting to see the team effort, that's all, you know, it was, it was a large team effort. It, it's very easy for a superintendent to sit in a room and write this yourself and hand it out and say, do it. My guess is we, we won't win much if somebody just tells you what to do, so I thank you.
Hearing no further comment, Ms. Anderson, please call the roll.
Mr. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Capavienco?
Yes. Seven, the affirmative, zero and the negative, yes, Howard.
Moving on to public comment. Hearing none, public relations, President Vecchia?
I'd like to agree with Lisa about the eleven foundation for helping out and raising that money and donating for cleaning up the town.
Two quick things, first, I just wanted to congratulate Coach Cattigan with his first win as head coach of the Vikings over Medford last week. I know he's been in the system as a player and coach for a number of years and it was great to see him with that accomplishment. Also, I attended the CASA Ballin' for a Cause event over the weekend, just thanks to John Hanson for organizing that great event in partnership with Recovery Month in memory of Michael Tedesco, Winthrop High School graduate. It's great to see so many former graduates and current students. Special thanks to the freshman team, freshman Vikings that I sponsored, they played two great games. Were not successful, but they had a lot of fun and I'm proud of them.
Just reminding, the Winthrop Parent Teacher Club is in the middle of their fundraiser right now. It's a calendar that you can buy as a lottery for all of October. You can find them on Facebook if you have not yet been, had a chance to get ahold of that calendar. And this is something that's really important because it funds a lot of scholarships as well as the parent, the teacher appreciation at the end of the year. So encourage anybody, if you have not, to get ahold of that fundraiser.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, yes, Howard.